And we're live on YouTube.
Good evening. It is six thirty PM, Monday, October fourth, twenty twenty one. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the allegiance led by Mr. Dan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present and you have a form.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda board. You'll see the consent agenda. Any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening?
I just had one question on the Blue Cross Blue Shield. We're renewing it with an increase, but has our coverage changed?
No, it has not. So we were delighted with with all of the.
And Dan, we, you know, I don't think we've ever seen such a slight increase. So we're not only worried pleased about that, but they were actually able to offer an additional plan as well. So staff can maintain their current plans, or there are some additional options through the same carrier as well.
Yeah, when I seen that the increase was so small, I thought, oh, we must have cut some coverage. So.
No, sir. Our B K D did a wonderful job. I feel for us this year. And I, I think they, they did in a Scott wanted to make sure that we were happy after I beat him up a little bit last year.
Did I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post consent agenda passes as presented. We'll move on to mayor's report. The only item I have to discuss this evening is want to let everybody know that use tax information is out on the city website concerning the November second, twenty twenty one ballot issue. If you have not already, I encourage you to visit the city of Carney's website, www dot carney mode dot U S backslash use underscore tax. It'll give you an opportunity to better understand the use tax and how the city will utilize the proceeds to make improvements in Carney that will benefit all Carney citizens and businesses. I will also be scheduling hearings to be announced time on social media and on the city's webpage as well. And we'll invite citizens to come, provide the opportunity for them to ask questions, express any additional ideas, which obviously we, we always welcome. So look on the city's website. There's information live now. And I encourage you to get familiar with the use tax question and vote on November second. That concludes mayor's remarks. We'll move on to the administrator's report.
Mayor, I don't have a report other than to say that I promised the board that we'd be able to see out your window and get an ocean view.
Yeah, there is.
You were in your office.
Oh, I missed it. I missed it. Okay. Well, thank you. No, no report, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to public requests and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, we have Leon Stone, resident at three eighteen West nineteenth Street. He's requesting for an installation or actually seeking a solution for speeding traffic in front of his home. And he is requesting placement of stop signs. I think he'd like to address the board.
Mr. Stone, you have the floor?
Yes, I do, sir. I'm seventy years old. Give me a minute. Me and my wife live at three eighteen West nineteenth Street. Been in Carney since seventy-six, seventy-seven. But there's too much speeding on nineteenth Street. We live near a contact, just directly west of the railroad track. I sit in my garage quite often and people speeding by, drive their trailer. They don't pay any attention to the crossroad for people walking over to go to the trail. And my concern is needs to be something done, put up the stop signs. And if the stop signs are put up, you can have a thirty day grace period and not give a ticket. But anything after thirty day period, then give them a ticket until they get used to it. But the railroad track is there. I know that. There's no lights there. And somebody said, well, you can't have stop signs close to railroad tracks. They'd be backed up on the railroad tracks. Okay. There's one train a month that comes on three eighteen West nineteenth Street. Look up here on ninety-two, there's a traffic light at ninety-two and thirty-three. There's a traffic light down by the Sonic. And I have seen numerous cars, many a time, backed up stepping on the railroad tracks. And that was one of the things that said, no, that shouldn't happen. I don't care. I just want it.
Worried somebody is going to get hurt. Kids, we put in sidewalks in front of our house, which we didn't have before, and we love them. Don't get me wrong. But the kids ride their bicycles by there. People walk by there. They, and it's not just after school. It's all the time they're speeding by there. Barney has actually sat in our driveway and caught several people speeding. But you can't have somebody sit in your driveway all the time to catch people.
I didn't permission.
You gave them permission to sit in our driveway. So we just think that something can be done because somebody is going to get hurt or there's going to be a bad accident. And somebody is really going to get hurt. That's our concern. And even this past week, there's been work on the railroad tracks. They've been putting gravel along the track. And there was one night, it was dark and the equipment went through. They didn't sound a horn or anything. If somebody had come over the hill and not been able to stop, they'd have hurt somebody from the railroad and themselves. So we just want to see something done, slow down the traffic.
We know we have to. It's a big word. If that's what happened, if that had happened, but. Just that. You don't wait.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I got a grandson. I got a grandson that comes and visits, rides his bicycle on the sidewalk. You all, put yourself in my position and see how you would feel. Something mad. It's ridiculous how fast they go. And they say you gotta collect data. I had Randy come to the house setting the garage down. But then you gotta put it on the dock. Discuss this and discuss that. Well, you have to understand my situation. I'm seventy years old. My first house is my third house in Carney. My first house was at two oh four Major. And Jim knows his. Russell, where Big Frank used to live. My kids would go there on the bicycle, tricycle. There was no stop sign. From the main drag all the way out north of town. And I know things have changed. But when Dennis Watson is the mayor, and I told him the same thing that I'm saying now. I don't want my kids, I don't want my kids hurt. Two days later, they had stop signs, four ways stop. They're at two oh four Major. And I would hear people hitting their brakes, squealing their tires until we got used to it. Once they got used to it, then they slowed down. But I am not a genius, but in common sense, give them a thirty, you put the stop signs up there, give them a thirty day grace period, write no tickets. But I guarantee you, after a thirty day period, your police department is welcome to sit in my driveway and write all the tickets that they want. And I, I don't know what y'all are going to do, but whenever you come up with a solution, I'd like to be informed about it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Stone, for taking the time to come and share your concerns and, and thoughts with myself and the board. Any additional feedback from the board on the item this evening?
Well, Mayor, this was, this was a tough one. I, I totally feel for Mr. Stone and I see where he's coming from. But nineteenth Street is also a collector's street and it's going to get even worse with the interchange coming in. I, we need to look, I don't know that the stop signs, I don't know, speed bumps, curves, I don't know. We need to do something to try to slow down traffic. I don't know that a stop sign is it. Maybe, may not. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm open to look at, at things. It's just that kind of a tough, tough road to do that on.
Yeah, my, my, my opinion is that it's a, it's a problem. And you, you've come off of nineteenth Street there at thirty-three and there's nothing to slow traffic down until you wrap all the way back around to the shops at Carney, there in this traffic circle. So I've been through there and seen people go in, you know,
I have too.
forty-five, fifty miles an hour. And so I know that that's a problem. We just, we need, I don't know whether it's putting the trailer out and letting people see that having extra patrols. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to the stop sign unless, I mean, but if we're being told that that's not the best way to handle it, then I, I have to defer to, to the people who know. But I, I do think that this is, is an issue that, that we should address in some way.
May I make, may I make one more statement? Okay. Like I say, people travel by there and, excuse me for a minute, I had a, had a thought on my head, but. Oh, I, I got it. I got it. When, when the mayor, Mr. Pope, I had called him and he sat in the garage and he said, yeah, there goes one. Yeah, okay. And so really didn't do something about it. Again, I forgot. No. Oh, I'm, a few years back, down by the swimming pool, I went and talked to an Alderman. What was his name?
I don't remember.
Hmm?
I don't remember.
Talked to an Alderman on the swimming pool, the street that goes directly north of my house. I said, the kids running across the street, there needs to be a speed bump put up there. So there was a speed bump put up there. And when Randy was in my garage and I was talking to him and I was telling him about that, but it was there for two years. And then once they did the snow and the piles and everything, speed bump disappeared. It's no longer there. And Randy Pope said, why is that? I said, that's a good question. But if y'all want to take care of the kids and not get them hurt, rather than just say, okay, this is a problem, speed bump. It's piled up. It'll be, it'll put it back. Me, that's malarkey. Thank you.
I lived in Regency Park for twenty-three plus years. And that was my only way in and out for the first fifteen plus because the two Shadow Brook and Regency Park were not connected. So you had no choice but to go out over the railroad tracks. I will definitely agree. I have seen this man in his garage for years now. And I'm the red Lincoln that waves for you. There are a lot of, I've seen it. I've seen him occasionally take air. But MoDOT says no to a stop sign there. Maybe, maybe it's a flashing yellow light that is, got a little solar panel that says caution pedestrian walkway. Maybe it's something easier, simpler that would not be a full on stop. I don't know.
I don't know either.
I'd, I'd built a house in Regency and Jerry was living there also. And, and I've seen cars bottom out. You know, they come down that road so fast that, that they literally bottom out on the, on the railroad tracks. And, and it doesn't matter whether they're coming from thirty-three or coming from the other way. And I, I agree. We, it's, it's definitely a problem. It's been a problem. Like Dan says, when the interstate goes in, it's, it's not gonna go, it's not gonna get better. And so, whether it's increased enforcement from the police department, I, I don't know. That's a weird, it's a weird intersection because the side streets don't, they don't come together at the, at the same point. And so a weird intersection and, and always has been. And, but, but I agree, we need to do something because I've lived here all my life. And like I said, I've seen cars bottom out on railroad tracks, coming from either way. And, and so, yeah, I, I, I don't know what the, the solution is.
I think it might be worth getting Tom Carey involved. Say, Tom, hey, because you also see it in enforcement way too. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I appreciate the board's comments and inputs as well. I, I can assure you that Chief Carey is aware of Mr. and Mrs. Stone's concerns. Been, been aware. Our, our officers have spent some extra time patrolling the area. We have looked at locations to place the speed trailer, to obtain additional data and information. However, there's no safe location for Assistant Chief Hafield to place the speed trailer without blocking views from either direction. I, I think at this point, it's, it's something that we maybe, not, not maybe, but obviously it's something that we all feel is important to look at ways of addressing and, and mitigating pedestrian safety concerns in the area. I, I know last time, you know, the, the sidewalks went through and we did the widening. There was additional safety. You know, the, the railroad track's still not ideal, but at least, you know, you don't bottom out on it anymore when you go over it. What, what exactly we do? You know, I, I don't think any of us have the answer. But rest assured, Mr. Stone, you know, we, we're hearing your concerns and, and we'll, we'll engage with some professionals and some traffic studies or, or possible engineers and see what sort of improvements we can bring to the area.
I just wondering what timeframe. I mean, you gotta collect data. You gotta do this. You gotta do that. And, you know, you gonna give it a month? You gonna give it two months?
Can't answer that. I mean, until we get that in, till we know what we're doing.
I know.
I don't know.
To me, in my opinion, that is ridiculous because of the situation. If you have, if you have a speed machine and it shows the data and how many people speed down that road. And I've already suggested that I've got a wooden well there. You put a camera on that. See how many people don't stop coming from Petty Road from the south. See what their speed is. See what happens. And I guarantee you, in a month's time, you will have enough data that you ought to be able to come up with a solution to the problem. That's my opinion. I'm not a smart guy, but common sense goes a long way.
Understand that. We'll, we'll take a look. I mean, I, I don't have an answer for you right now.
Well, somebody will have an answer. I mean, you don't have an answer. Estimated time, I mean, you're gonna wait, say you wait a month, say you wait two months and there were two accidents there. You wouldn't think about that if you didn't make up your mind before that period of time?
I understand your concern. I can't give you that time period though.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I make comments?
Sure. Sure. Hey, Randy.
I know a lot of you. My name's Randy Brenzelman. Live out on nineteenth Street. I'm on the south side of the road. Been here thirty-three years, or no, thirty-four here September. So I wanted to let everybody know, I've got to know Mr. Stone and Mrs. Stone over the years. I'm a frequent walker of the trail. I'm the guy with the black dog that everybody knows. Mr. Stone here spoils them rotten, so we always make a stop there. I witnessed exactly everything he says. He's, there's, no doubt, there's a lot of speeding going on. I've witnessed it from my driveway as well. I come, I work from home, so I, I see it frequently. You can't miss it. You can't miss the sound. It's like Mr. Barney said, you'll know when somebody's speeding just based on the sound. We're starting to see a lot of big truck traffic coming through as well. And one of those comes flying down that hill, they're not going to get stopped in time. It is an extreme safety hazard there. Anybody taking a left turn out of Regency Drive or a left turn out of Petty Road, their, their lives in danger due to the speeding. We've already seen one right there. We saw the aftermath of that. It was, it was pretty bad. Lady luckily survived. She was shaken up the vehicle. Well, I would say it had to be towed off. It was totaled. You know, so it just basically comes down, what is going to be our plan to, to reduce the speed and the safety of residents on nineteenth Street. There are residents all along nineteenth Street and what's, what's the plan for their safety? Also, like I said, we're starting to see the big trucks come through. What is our plan on the noise pollution? Have we even thought about that? For the residents, so. And just on the matter of safety, you know, there, like I said, I walk that trail twice a day, morning and evening. There's a crosswalk on the west side of the tracks. I'd like to recommend that we get one of those flashing crosswalks. They're, they're ignoring the two signs that are there now. I mean, an effort's been made, yield dust screens. They're going. They're not stopping. I, and I, you know, Jim, I've seen you on the trail too. And I, I walk it and it just, it's, they don't stop. And I think of a sign like you have out by the high school or the one over on ninety-two. We need to put one there. I mean, I, I would recommend that. And along the walking trail, this is kind of off the subject matter, but just, just one, I told the individual I'd bring it up if I came to the meeting. He, he's from Chicago. They've been here a year. They use the bike trail there around Greenfield. And he suggested maybe putting mile markers. Again, it's safety related. He bikes, walkers, runners, they trip, they fall. They call, they don't know where to tell the emergency crew to come. So. I told him I would put that out there for y'all. That's all I have. Thank you for letting me speak.
I, we also appreciate you, sir, taking the time to, to share your thoughts and concerns. I, I do think, personally think that your recommendation of the, the flashing push button warning signs for the crosswalks as we've started implementing other crossworks in the community is a great idea. I, I, I know it's been mentioned. I, I can assure you, the board, we hear loud and clear your concerns. And we, we are, take, we do take it seriously. You know, public safety is one of our biggest responsibilities as a board in this community. Staff's working on it. We're working on solutions. I, I, I know, you know, especially when it's safety related, we all want answers now and fast. You know, as Mr. Stone mentioned and has realized, we're, when, when available, I, I wish we could have, have law enforcement in every area of, of concern in the community at once. But unfortunately, that's, we can't do until we have a firm plan. We'll continue to have office area for extra patrol as available. And rest assured, any other concerns moving forward, feel free to contact any of us. And we'll, we'll keep you updated on, on this status. Last thing I'll mention is I, I, the, the mile marker idea, or even if it's a color coded area, we, we had a public safety incident on the, the trails about a month ago. And when the caller called nine one one, she, you know, she had a hard time communicating where she was. So that's something I've discussed with our, our park staff. I don't know where they are on that, but I'll, I'll follow back up with, with Eric Marshall and, and see if that's something we could coordinate. It's a good suggestion. Move on to the next part of our agenda. No public hearings this evening, no old business, but we do have an item under new business this evening.
Mr. Mayor, the Carney Chamber of Commerce has proposed a funding request from the ARPA funds that have been provided to us by the federal government. They enclosed an ADA in the agenda. It's a detailed proposal from the Chamber of Commerce to utilize thirty-five thousand dollars to implement a program for strengthening Carney, Missouri tourism. Also enclosed is a proposed resolution and memorandum of, of understanding to be executed with the chamber concerning the use of the ARPA funds. As proposed, the resolution states that Congress designated ARPA funds to respond to public health emergencies with, with respect to the Corona disease twenty nineteen, COVID nineteen, or its negative economic impacts, including aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. We believe this project is consistent with the intended use of the ARPA funds and is an eligible expense. And if you'd like to consider the enclosed resolution, I can read by title.
Any questions or discussion from the board? I know myself, Jim, David Pavlich and Alderman Spencer have previously met with the Chamber. have previously met with the Chamber Executive Director, Ms. Bratcher, and another representative of their board. Something I would fully support and recommend. But I'm happy to give you guys opportunity to ask questions or discuss any concerns before we entertain a motion by Todd Olley. We can entertain a motion by Todd Olley, please?
I make a motion with the resolution.
A resolution recognizing the need to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality by authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Carney Chamber of Commerce of Carney, Missouri Incorporated, to implement a program to strengthen Carney, Missouri tourism at a cost of thirty-five thousand dollars, and further determining said program is an eligible expense of ARPA funds pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act. Is ARPA.
Make a motion to approve?
All in favor? opposed? Second reading by Todd Olley, please?
Single reading is all that's necessary, Mr. Mayor.
Single reading is all that's necessary, okay. Congratulations, it passes. We'll move on to Alderman, Alderman Spencer?
I understand that the Oktoberfest was a smashing success. I don't think there were any smashing pumpkins, but nonetheless, a smashing success. So, kudos to Kirk Hamilton and his whole group, and all the volunteers. There was a lot of effort put forward, and it showed.
Yeah, it was, it's very unfortunate, I'm out of town and wasn't able to attend, but I saw many live videos and posts. And I'm glad to see the tenth annual BACH Oktoberfest really blow up in a good way. Alderman Holt?
I just want to piggyback on that. We, my wife and I, we enjoy the festivities. We were down there most holiday, got home late that night, in one piece. And we ran into a lot of people that were from out of town. This project actually brought a lot of people into our community. Geno's had a line cleaning down the road. The creamery was totally packed, and they had, they had as many people almost in the restaurants, they had the ice cream parlor. The outside deck area was all completely full. Diddy's was packed to the gills with people outside. So, all of our businesses down here really was impacted greatly by this event. And I was very concerned about parking in the one oh five building, awesome. We had good parking, and we really didn't hear anybody complaining about that issue at all. Very few complaints. You heard a lot of people walking around, and all, hey, this was great, a lot of compliments. They were even grateful of how many bathrooms we had sitting around, because we had a lot of porta-potties where people didn't have to wait in long lines or couldn't find a place to go to bathroom, parking was good. It was a good event. They enjoyed the vendors, and the vendors down there had a lot of traffic, which was really good. I guess the biggest thing was, we could have had a little more food trucks, maybe, something like that. But other than that, it was a great event. And at each aspect of it, from the children, to getting the dance studio, and the cheerleaders, everybody involved in our community, it really highlighted Carney's a small town to a lot of people that didn't know Carney was that cool, kind of cool town. So, it was really neat, it was a great event, and I really hope it's something that we can build off of and do again next year.
Alderman Lehman?
Again, Oktoberfest, I actually heard the polka band from my house, so... It sounded like a good time. Drove by several times, heading north and going south. And man, I'll tell you what, there was a lot of people downtown. And it was, it was great to see all the people downtown. It kind of reminded me of the times when Justin James Festival was downtown.
I knew a lot of that too.
And the amount of people down here supporting our businesses downtown was really, really good to see. So, um, so it was good to see, hopefully that happens again, and maybe we can come up with some other events to have downtown that draw, draw big crowds to help our businesses in this tough time, so.
Alderman Barker?
I'll just add my congratulations to all of the people who made that event happen. That's a lot of hard work and a small amount of time, and it's not easy to please a lot of people. And it sounds like they were very successful in that, so my congratulations to them.
Yes, great event. I hope to make it next year for sure. And one thing I forgot to mention is, if you had not seen the announcement already on social media, the Carney Bark, our dog park as of today, is open. So, appreciate staff, we did a lot of the work internally, so that saved thousands and thousands of dollars. Donnie Smith and his crew, Eric Marshall, Ryan Mark, Cotton Ray, Kendall with our Parks Department, did a lot of the work internally. Our local partner on that was Barham Fencing, a Carney local company. The other toys and items will be in the end of this month, hopefully. So, look forward to seeing everybody out there at the dog park. That concludes Alderman's discussion. Can we entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
Second shot?
All in favor? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, everybody have a good evening, thank you.